Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November 18th, and the time is 6:31 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First on our agenda is the consent agenda, meeting minutes from November 5th. Any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from November 5th, 2025 as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, warrants 29 and 31, which will be going around for signature. Any questions or comments on those?
I was gonna make a joke about the $17,000 in equestrian equipment for warrant 29, but I don't want anybody to freak out, so. No, I have no questions. For all those listening, that's not on there.
I was gonna say what?
Yeah.
Payrolls way off.
Yeah, that's what it was. I'll make a motion to accept warrants 29 and 31 as dictated in the forms.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Visitor's comments. Any citizens wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record of the meeting. Seeing none, we'll move right along. Brenna is not here. All right, new business. Co-op with South Hadley Boys Lacrosse.
Mr. Dubek is supposed to be here, so I don't know. Mr. Dubek is supposed to be here. So maybe.
We can revisit, or do you know?
He said he was coming. I just talked to Mrs. Jordan.
If we need to come back, I can speak to him.
Okay, well, we'll give him a minute. And then the GEA Sick Bank representative.
George, one of our former school committee members, served on the Sick Bank Committee, which is a committee put together with our GEA members, staff members, to allot sick time and keep track of sick time in the districts. If somebody looking for additional sick time for an illness or whatever they need, that committee get together to either grant or deny extra sick time if somebody utilizes sick time above and beyond what they've already accumulated and are using. So we need to ask somebody on the school committee if they'd be willing to serve on the Sick Bank Committee, and it's very infrequent that these meetings happen. Last year we had a couple, but before that, I think it'd been a couple of years. So it doesn't happen too often. Todd, do you know more?
Yeah, no, it's as needed.
Right.
It only meets as needed.
And you can do it virtually. It doesn't have to be in person, so.
I'll jump on. Take that.
Excellent.
We need to vote for that. I wasn't sure we had to vote.
Ginny, do you know if we voted to add George to that?
That was before my time.
Before our time, we weren't sure.
We weren't sure. I know as far as, I don't know if you consider it like a subcommittee really, that you would like, for instance, if you're a negotiation representative, that's why I put it as a vote, but.
Why don't we just go ahead and vote?
Get hurt.
So I'll take the motion.
I'll make a motion for Michael Durham to be appointed to the GEA Sick Bank representative.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is Subcommittee Reorganization for Evaluation. This was another one that George.
And was George on policy as well?
George was on policy, but it was Trevor, Mr. Agostino was gonna be transitioning. So it puts now Mr. Agostino and Ms. LaPond as the policy subcommittee.
Right.
So this was the only one that was left that George or Mr. Balk was.
They couldn't find any member?
Oh, okay.
So just another quick vote on that?
I think so.
Make a motion to have Mr. Agostino and Ms. LaFon be the primary members of the Subcommittee on Reorganization and Evaluation.
Second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're supposed to adjourn to subcommittees, but we're really not able to do policy, but we should probably touch base on negotiation. So Trevor, you don't have to go to another room. You just can't vote or weigh in on anything. This will just be a fill-in thing. So we'll take a break for 10, 15 minutes to fill in on negotiations, and then we'll come right back. Okay, so we just had a brief discussion for negotiation committee, and we have our first meeting tomorrow, which is November 19th, which will be a ground rules meeting. And we'll be able to update everybody moving forward. Anyone have anything to add to that? All right, Superintendent's report. Mary Jane.
Do you want to go back to the new business for lacrosse, maybe?
Oh, okay, go backwards, yeah. I was just giving Dylan more time to come as we're cruising along, but.
All right, it's up to you.
Well, go for it. Let's do it.
All right, so Mr. Dubuk is putting forward for a vote for our lacrosse program to co-op with South Hadley. South Hadley expressed interest in co-opping. Our numbers are declining, as well as we had co-opted with the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School for our lacrosse for the past couple of seasons. Even with those numbers, the two schools combined, he believed we would be around 11 players, which is how many you field at a time. Also, it wasn't a sustainable model. South Hadley is experiencing some declining enrollment and participation as well. So looking to have our 7 through 12 be able to participate in the co-op.
Will we be the whole school or South?
South Hadley will be the whole school. And so we would, their user fee is, I think it's $250, so the students will be paying South Hadley user fee rate for participation.
And we can help those that might not be able to afford.
We have our regular mechanism.
Regular thing. I just want to make sure that, just by sheer point of going to the South Hadley co-op, that we're not eliminating someone's ability to participate for financial reasons, so.
Yeah, we could use our regular mechanism for users.
So it would just be another, an additional co-op. Like we have a couple with South Hadley, and we have one with Amers for football and.
Hadley for golf.
And then someone for hockey, right? Oh, is that Dylan now? I don't know.
Yep.
Yep. Come in. Hello? We were just talking about this. Come on, have a seat.
Jenny's moving quickly today.
All right, yeah, sorry.
Todd gave us the overview, but just, what do you?
Yeah, so we have nine returning players. There's 11 people on a field at once. We've only fielded varsity the last couple of years. This is a program that's come and gone with the numbers. We had a co-op with the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion School. They only have four players. And of our nine, four are gonna be eighth graders. Playing a varsity lacrosse is tough. It's very dangerous, too, so. With the numbers being low, really can't even field a full 11. And then middle schoolers reached out. South Hadley's only had a varsity program last year. They're trying to build their JV backup. They're willing to take us and the Pioneer Valley kids. And then those four eighth graders could also still play for South Hadley rec 7th and 8th grade if they want to stay playing lacrosse. I reached out to Andy at the rec to make sure they would have a place if they wanted to still play, so. It's not ideal, but it keeps our kids, giving our kids a chance to play a sport that they, you know, it's always new, not always, but most of the time lacrosse is new to our students because there's no youth lacrosse. So some of them fall in love with it, and you know, we want to make sure they still have a place to go if they want to keep up with it, if we think that's a good idea for our kids.
And transportation is like any other, families are responsible?
Yeah, yeah, that's been our thing with the co-ops. It's hard to, you know, offer up busing. Right now, in the winter, we have the boys' ice hockey in Chickaby, swim in Hoyo, girls' ice hockey in Long Meadow. To try to transport kids all over the place would become pretty crazy.
Unaffordable, for sure.
Yeah.
All right, any additional questions on the co-op? Hearing none.
Just question, does South, does Hadley, the Chinese Immersion School also have to do this vote? Or are they just by our?
I don't know. I imagine they have to get approval from their school or their school committee. I don't know how it works over there, but.
Because we're already co-op with them, so I guess.
Yeah, just saying that we're in doesn't guarantee that they're in. I think they gotta make that decision as their own school.
Just a question. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I know that. I've heard from one of their parents, from their side, that they were happy that they still had a chance to keep playing.
All right, I'll take the motion.
Make a motion to accept the boys' lacrosse co-op with South Hadley.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Dylan.
All right, have a good night, guys.
All right, Mary Jane.
I just have a couple of things. I did want to share some of our MCAS results with you, but I'll do that at the end of my presentation. I've been trying to keep you all abreast of things that are happening with, at the Department of Education. And I've been trying to put in every month the actual meetings that they have for DESI. One of the last meetings they had, they were talking about licensure for staff and trying to see how we can recruit more teachers. So even though the meeting was this morning, I did want to let you take a look at it. If you're interested, you can follow and look at it for the future, but I think it's good information for us to have, and I'm gonna try to continue to give you that information. I also wanted to let folks know that DESI is also doing a Name the Snowplow contest, and some of our schools, our schools, some of our students have already starting to participate in that. So it's gonna be Name a Snowplow contest, and I'm kind of excited to see what the kids come up with on that. That'd be kind of fun. I did want to bring something up, though, because we didn't have policy subcommittee. I do have some concerns that now that the MCAS is no longer a graduation requirement, we're required to submit our new competency determination policy to DESI. So we'll have, if you take a look at your packet that Ginny gave you, there are some unread policies in there. You'll find IKF, which is our graduation policy, IKFE, the competency determination policy, and IKFAB, which is a policy that we don't need anymore because of certificate of attainment in that folder. Required to submit the determination by the end of December. And in the high school guidance department and myself, along with the high school principal, took a look at these policies and made them work for our district. So I'd like you guys to take, if you can, if we don't have, we need to have either subcommittee meeting or take a look at the meeting, the policies for the next meeting. So if we can do a first read at the next meeting or accept it. But again, whatever we decide, I need the policy accepted by the 16th of December so that I can put it in the portal, but it may take me a few days to get it in there. So it's pretty boiler standard plate, you know, everybody kind of following the same rules. The only thing that will be different is our actual graduation policy, what our credits are. So that initial policy would be different than everybody else's, but pretty much the competency determination policy, competency determination policies is, you know, pretty much the same, just a little bit here and there. So if we take a look at that, maybe, if we can't have a policy, put a policy subcommittee meeting for the next meeting and take a look at that if we can. So, and I just have a little presentation here, nothing that's going to take too, too long. But I did want to share our MCAS results. I know that people were worried about the MCAS results across the state. They've been going down.
Access denied.
You only.
For access.
Sorry.
Access denied.
Oh, my goodness. I am so sorry. You're all restricted. I will give you, anybody with the link can have it. Okay, we still have it now. So even though the state went down, MCAS, I can say, what they're comparing us to now this year is the pre-pandemic MCAS results. So what you're seeing there are results from 2019. So if you take a look at our trends from 2019 today, we've actually gone up five points in ELA, in grades three through eight. In math, you went up 10 points, and in the science, it two points. So I mean, those aren't significant gains, but because we're falling, we were kind of declining after the pandemic, we're starting to make gains up again. So I just wanted you to see it, and you can see the chart, what that looks like. You know, we dipped a little bit, and then we're kind of heading back up into the trajectory zone. Our staff, principals met with the staff members to talk about specifically what questions that we needed to work on and what our curriculum looks like. So we did break this down, you know, by standard and by question for the MCAS and those types of things to help us in the future. But the high school is very, you know, pre and post pandemic is very similar. Point plus five, plus 10, and plus two. So that's our overall, almost a mirror of the other scores as well. But you can see that the trajectory for there pretty much stayed the same at the high school. We are noticing a slight decline at this year because, as we know, the MCAS is no longer a requirement. So even though we are still ahead before the pandemic, we did go down slightly this year because students, I think, realize that the MCAS is no longer a graduation requirement. So we're really trying to work with the families to let them know that the MCAS is still important because it's good information for us. They still offer the Abigail and John Adams scholarships. So you know, there are things that students can get out of that. So we're really looking to see how we can increase those numbers. These are specific charts. This is your first chart, so the students with and without disabilities. You can see that everybody's making progress. Students with disabilities, you know, about 6%, students without disability, 62%, and then all students in general, about 31% in English Language Arts. That was our biggest gains. Math, not quite as high, but we're still making gains. The students with disabilities still had 6%, which would be great if we can get that a little higher, but the all students at 32, and then math is again at 41%. So you know, we are making slight gains. Slightly better in science for the students with special needs and with all of the students. So students without disabilities, with and without disabilities, that's just all of our students. I don't know how they categorize that, students with and without disabilities, but I don't know how that's different than all students, but that's how they categorize it. And then this is by population, low income, non-low income, and then all students. So you know, we do have a little bit of work with our low-income students, but the non-income and the all students are pretty close, with the exception of science. Same thing in grades three through eight. Take a look at these charts. You can see we're really doing well in science for grades three through eight, which is remarkable since our science curriculum really has just amped up in the last couple of years. So really impressed with those numbers, and we're just gonna continue to see that move forward, I'm pretty sure. Our fifth and sixth grade teachers are really taking the bull by the horns and really making sure the students get more science than they've ever had in the past. So I'm really excited to see next year's numbers with those students. And then at the high school, these are the students who meeting or exceeding. And I didn't make a graph for that one because it's only one grade. So if you take a look at that particular graph, you can see that 18% of our students are meeting or exceeding at the high school, 9% at math for low income. They don't have it in, we don't have any numbers for the biology. High needs, 20%, and ELA, you can read these yourself. So I didn't know if you guys had questions. I don't want to read it all out loud, but I will be putting this on the website for families to see as well. So make sure we do that. And then overall, our classifications, we're not needing assistance, and that particular reason is because we made moderate progress towards our targets that were given to us. And I've given you a link of our district profile, and you can see that a little bit more of what that looks like and how we did overall as a district and as a school. I kind of did a quick overview for you, but I wasn't sure how long the subcommittees were gonna be, so. But I can definitely go into this in further depth by question if you'd like me to do that as well. But it's totally up to you folks.
One thing I didn't, oh, I'm sorry. I was moving, I was moving right along. I don't have any questions on this. Thank you.
I was just gonna say that's trending in the right direction.
We are trending in the right direction. Yeah, compared to some people in the state, you know, they did have concerns with third grade, but we overall are making good game, good progress, for sure.
One thing I didn't see in your update is that NHS induction is on Thursday?
It is. Yes, that is, it is. I will be, yes, NHS induction is 6 o'clock. I will be at East Meadow.
The gym.
Yeah, and the gym. I assumed Brianna was gonna be there, so I.
Brenna.
Brenna, Brenna, yes, I keep calling her there. Every time I see her, she tells me Brenna. Yeah, so yes, that is the National Honor Society. And yes, I will be there, and I believe everybody was invited, so.
Did you all get your invitations?
I believe so.
Okay.
What was that, too?
For National Honor Society, National Honor Society induction.
An email?
I guess it was sent as an email. I got Crystal Dufresne, who is the NHS advisor. She asked me, because my daughter's being inducted, so she asked me if I was, wanted to sit as a parent or sit on stage, and I chose on stage, so I can hug her onstage and all of her little friends. But yeah, so I didn't get an email, but I knew that it's been, so.
It said East Meadow at 6 o'clock, Mr. Agostino.
East Meadow. When?
Thursday.
Thursday. Can I say tomorrow? Thursday.
No.
Oh.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock here, in the gym. All right, any additional questions for Mary Jane?
Yeah, I just, I'm looking at the 2025 MCA's meets or exceeds high school. Again, we're not longer using them, so any numbers we're looking at really, because the kids may, or the students may make a choice, just, hey, we're gonna.
We're not to do that. Trying to make sure that they, you know, they take it seriously.
Because I was just looking at this 6% male in math and 45% females. That was something that drew, I looked right at, and I'm like, wow. But again, we can't really use this as a number because I was a student once. I know when I had, especially my senior year, you know, it was loose. You just did whatever you wanted.
Yeah, we do have some concerns, and I think statewide is a concern for the students who, you know, are interested in going to college and looking for that extra Abigail Adams and those scholarships to help pay for some of that. Those students are still gonna continue to be successful, and I'd like to think everybody else would also be. But you know, if it's not a graduation requirement, I think some people may not take it as seriously, but you know, time will tell. We have great kids in Granby, so.
And I'm sure there'll be other methods to track things and see if we get a better.
Determination is about. So that's what we actually have to report to the state because they want to know, how are you, because we don't have the MCAS, what methods are you using? So I have to submit all the data to them about, you know, what our testing looks like and what standards are reaching. So those are, that's the new way. And the state, which is also coming across to us in many different forms, is the governor has created a new task force to look at graduation requirements. So we, all of us are a little concerned that, are we doing this? And then having the governor come out with something else. That is a concern for us as well. But you know, we've got to follow the timelines and the guidelines, and we'll change it as we need to. That's all I have.
Any additional questions? All right, Todd, you're up.
So I put in the folder, draft of FY27 budget calendar. I shared it with our leadership team today. We had our initial meeting last Thursday with the town administrator. I reached out to ensure that we were gonna meet her timeline for the budget process. So she appreciated us having that initial conversation. We don't have any parameters or marching orders, as it were, other than, you know, it's going to be a tough budget cycle. So that's all the real information that we were able to take away from that, which, you know, we typically really get into the meat of it once the governor's cherry sheet comes out, those initial estimates, that becomes our real numbers for us to work from. Excuse me. And as I have on here, and as I've done the past couple of years, I'll be providing the initial templates for the department heads, the principals to begin drafting their budgets based on what they've used the past few years. We're not doing a zero-based budget. We have so few real discretionary lines that if they are looking to introduce new things, this is certainly the opportunity to bring those forward, and we'll have those discussions as we get those back. And then I will send that first draft to the town administrator by December 30th.
Just to refresh my memory, when does the cherry sheets come out? Is that January?
Yeah, it's typically about the third week of January. So the one question that I have for the committee, last year in December, we did a public forum just to solicit information or thoughts from the community in the early stage of the budget. We didn't have any participation from the community. I wanted to see if the committee still wanted to make that available for that second December meeting in our calendar.
I wonder if there's a way that we could do it differently? Like, do we, I mean, we're looking for input or whatever. I don't know. I'm just sort of off the top of my head at this point, but do we include a link to the budget in the newsletter? And if people have questions, they could, we could maybe make a spot on the website. People, we could generate questions, and you know, if we have it out, maybe the, what should we do, weekly or something, the week before? And if we have any, we could try to address them at the top of one of our next meetings. I don't, so this is gonna come out wonky, but I don't want to waste our time to come prepared for a meeting to go through stuff if we're not gonna get, if we're not gonna have any participation.
Right.
But if we put it out there and there's interest and people want to come and have a conversation, or if we have questions ahead of time that we can prepare and speak to, I feel like that might be beneficial, but I don't want us to come and.
Like, we could go in the newsletter, and they can send any inquiries, any questions that you'd like to field to the school committee, send to the administrative assistant, and I can.
You know, you don't usually have the budget done in December 16th.
No, so what I would.
It's just like, but it was, we, because we, the reason this started is that in the past, people were upset, saying that they didn't know, and they wanted to be a part of. So we're like, well, all right, well, we hear you. Let's have some of these conversations. Let's, you know, we'll put it out there, what it's looking like, what we're hearing, what we're feeling, you know, how it looks. And then, you know, we prepared stuff. We came and we sat here. We essentially stared at each other for a little bit and went over the stuff. So it was recorded, but no one ever looks at it, and no questions were generated from it. So I don't want to make busy work, and I don't want to have people commit time to come when we already have, like, we're gonna have negotiations, we're gonna have all these other things piling up on top of. I don't want to be a time burden for people, especially at this time of year.
So yes, December 16th is a regularly scheduled meeting, so I wasn't gonna add an additional day. And what I would do, I can repost our FY26 budget as a point of comparison. I wouldn't be ready to put an FY27 version out. I still, I'm just getting them turned in by the department heads. There's negotiations going on. There's a number of things that that information just isn't ready for the public to review. But having an FY26, this is what we're spending money on this year. Are there areas that you think we're missing or things of that nature that might generate those kinds of questions? So I think I would approach it that way.
Does it make sense to post it or push it and do a forum like that in like January instead? You know, I don't know. I'm just thinking, I mean, if we have a regular scheduled meeting, that's one time, but we came early to have it, and nothing happened, so.
So the reason that I proposed December rather than January because if there is something that we are trying to adopt or incorporate from community feedback, I would like to have a chance to have that be part of that first draft that I sent to the town administrator to meet that timeline.
Well, I think it's a good idea. Maybe send out a link in the newsletter to capture people's thoughts, and then we could roll it into a subcommittee discussion, and then get those crafted into a potential discussion with the town.
We could do, people who are, who want to access it, we could do a Google form that captures that link was available, and we could provide.
Or even if it's just like gathering information, you know, even if there's not, we could put the old one out there, but if there's just general questions about things related to, then, you know, we can have that and collect that information so that at the beginning of the meeting or. At the beginning of the meeting or as a part of the meeting on the sixteenth, we can, you know. We give them, we're reviewing them, and it becomes part of the public, and people want to come and, and be heard and be part of the cu, uh, conversation. At, initially, that would be fine, but I just, you know, I don't wanna add more for. Nothing, you know, and if, if, if we put it out there, I don't see why we couldn't put it out there. Even sooner, just like, do you have any um, questions, comments, concern about upcoming, as we're getting ready to go into budget season, and see if anything's generated? You know, it's not.
It's easy enough to do.
It's school, community only, but um, I don't know how we can get it out beyond that. If you put a link on the website if anyone's watching and wants to do that, but. You know, I don't, um, that's one of the things where we have the disconnect, right? Like, we don't have. Our focus is the school families and that community that reaches out to us. We don't have a way that's been successful to get beyond. That realm, but if, you know, if we can get the word out or post on the website, and if anybody watches this, you know. If people have questions, maybe we, maybe we can get interest that way. I, I don't, I don't know, I'm at a loss, but. It's worth giving a try, right?
Absolutely, and that's a way to engage the stakeholders, and then we can have that discussion, I think.
I, I think that's a better approach than the meeting.
Yeah, people, I mean, with the best luck we ever had with attendance for a meeting was when um, we had. The ability to have, stream it live and had people um.
We can stick with that till the end of November, next year.
Um, but, you know, we, we haven't been doing that um, here, so. You know, it's another way that we could potentially revisit that when we do budget stuff further down, is maybe post a link and have a. A Google or Zoom or whatever. Teams or whatever you wanna call it, so, um.
No, I like the idea. I think that's a great way, because if people can't come out for whatever reason, that's a great way for them still to participate by. You know, putting their thoughts down, and we help them.
Sure, all right.
So make that adjustment.
Okay.
On the calendar.
I like it. You'll get that into the web, I'll talk to the principals and uh. Probably do it right after Thanksgiving, I don't know if they can.
And the other, only other highlighted areas were, I'm working with the principals about. Um, working with their meetings and things to be able to keep the staff, uh, the faculty and staff informed of where we are in the budget process. So those are the only other highlighted areas, there's some dates that might be changed, those are a little bit, based on their meeting schedules.
Perfect. Anything else?
No, that's all that I have.
Um, how, is everyone still loving the new kitchen?
Trevor has something to add.
Oh, sorry, Trevor.
That's great. Um, I just, at the last meeting, you had mentioned that about getting some information from the town administrator. Has that been accomplished?
Um, not yet.
Okay.
So, um.
Oh, for the end of your report.
Report, no, I haven't received that information yet. We did talk about that in our meeting on Thursday. Uh, they have um, hired a consultant. Who's familiar with the legacy software, um, and I think that they are working on some of, closing some of, closing their fiscal year. So that, once that's done, I believe they'll be able to turn their attention to some of my requests.
So are we, have we been given the appropriate extensions and everything?
I emailed Desi uh, today because. Uh, regarding that, and um, I'm looking for some guidance from Desi because they don't give open-ended extensions, and I. Identified our circumstance, um, to see if they'll give me any guidance in terms of how much time to actually ask for.
Okay, excellent. Well, just keep us apprised of that, cause I.
Yeah.
Are there any kind of fines or penalties or something if we don't, and if they don't grant the extension, and then what does that do for us?
So the. Thing that Desi, the uh, deputy commissioner has mentioned uh, in. Meetings, not just for Grammy, but in other meetings I've been in, as well as to us, is if they, it'll get to a point where they withhold chapter seventy funds from the town. And I certainly relayed that to the town administrator.
Cause that would be huge.
Right, that is our primary funding source.
Awesome. That's exciting.
Same.
Um, anything else? Any other questions? Okay, Liz is not here. Um, so I think that's it. When is our next? Next meeting is December second. Anything that we wanna make sure that we have on the agenda for next time? We should.
Those policies.
We need to have a policy subcommittee. And it'd probably be good to have budget and finance, again, just because we'll have had a preliminary um, ground rule meeting, and we'll be talking about negotiations and budget. Um, stuff, so we'll have a budget subcommittee. Since we didn't have it this time, um. That's all I can think of at this point, to make sure it's on, but I'm sure there'll be regular stuff that comes along.
Mm-hmm. I just had a comment, one that would fit in.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to commend all the fall sports teams.
Oh.
Especially uh, the, the girls' soccer team. One of my bucket list was to go to, after I retired, was to, you know. Catch some of these games, and I did finally got to see four of their games. I ended up staying till half, well, going there till halftime last night.
Oh, you were there?
Well, I, well, our meeting was canceled, so I.
Yeah.
Quarter of six, so I said, I'm gonna go over there. I was disappointed with the cost.
Yeah.
I won't go into that right now.
Yeah, um, just so you know, that has nothing to do with Granby.
No, I didn't imagine, I didn't imagine, I mean, but when we're, when we're, I'll just mention that, it was. Eleven fifty to go see a soccer game in a high school, and I think when we're building community. These are really things that should be open to the public. You know, we're trying to build community, and this is something to open doors, but. That's my digression, but I don't wanna take away from their excellent season, that's where I wanted to go with it, and um, being able to see them, they had poised talent. And um, it hurts right now, but good things are to come.
Yeah.
No matter what these, no matter what these students do.
It was a, it was quite a ride, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Exciting. Um, and then the only other thing is there, um, uh, just to close the loop, the meeting that Trevor alluded to, there was a um. Joint committee meeting that we were supposed to have with um. The select board that got canceled at the last minute due to conflicting schedules, so um. I reached out to Mark before the meeting, and he says it probably won't be until sometime in December at this point, because of course. Um, November's only about twelve days left. Um, but he said that he'll um, have uh, Tammy reach out, and we'll see if we can find. Another time uh, to do it. Again, it's not. It's not like anything's gonna happen, we're gonna snap our fingers, and there's gonna be, you know, magic, but um. It's my understanding, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, is that they want to appoint a committee to investigate um. That, and that will, you know, will go forward from there, so that's what that was about. So. Once I hear, or when's Mary Jane here, is we'll um, we'll figure that out and repost for, for that. Um, I think that's, I think that's.
Candy ranch, I'm, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right, if there's um, nothing else, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
Uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night, everybody.
You too.